All right. Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and welcome to the April 2021 hearings of the Town of Canada with zoning board of appeals. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the pledge of allegiance, after which we will have a brief moment of silence for our active servicemen and women. We'll have on the screen the flag here shortly. All right, if you join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll begin tonight with a continued public hearing for property that's located at forty-two ten County Road sixteen. The request of the applicant is for an area variance for parcel coverage of twenty-seven point four seven percent when twenty-five percent is the maximum allowed. And in area variance for a driveway setback of two point four two feet when ten feet is the minimal allowed. We heard information on this application last month. Chip, are you still gonna be out on this one?
Yes, I'm out.
Okay, so just for the benefit of those joining with us, Dr. Sailor, member of our board, is an enjoying property owner, so he has recused himself. He has spoken towards this application last month's hearing, but not as a board member, but rather as a private resident. So, Mr. Lewis or Mr. Marx, do you want to begin and bring us up to speed on discussions or potential changes in the project since we last met?
Chairman Robinson, this is Chris with the town. The the variances were modified since last set. It is a one point six foot or one point six percent lot coverage and a two foot side setback.
Okay, one point six percent lot coverage and a two point five setback?
No, just a two foot side setback.
Okay, two.
Yeah, Terrence, if I may, this is John.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I interacted with Brennan quite a bit. We took all the input that we got from primarily the neighbor, the neighbors, and have adjusted the house so that the house sits a little bit. If you look at just the house without the driveway, it's a little bit to one side. But if you look at the house with the driveway, we got it so it sits more in the middle, which set that driveway much further away from Chip's property. And according to, you know, what Mark made a comment in the meeting last week, he's more than happy with, you know, if we pushed it into that eight to ten feet from his property. So we accomplished that. And I did, Terrence, take the opportunity to share this particular picture with my neighbors to explain to it. And I got some very positive feedback from the neighbors as well, so.
For Chris Jensen, just to clarify for my benefit, that one point or the two, excuse me, the two foot side setback is to the north, right?
It is the primary structure, north side setback.
Okay. That's what I thought. Just wanted to confirm. Okay. All right, let's open it up to the board. Obviously, like I said, we had an opportunity to look at this last month, but the project's been slightly revised. Any questions or comments from anyone on the board?
I would just, I need to question the applicant whether they have had conversations with that northern neighbor and whether that neighbor is comfortable with the situation.
Yeah, so John, this is John Lewis speaking. So based on the last meeting we had with Mark, I think you referred to Mark Makovic, who was on the northern side. He expressed in the last meeting, he was more than happy if we pushed the house to the eight to ten foot range. I then subsequently sent him this drawing, John, to both my neighbors, and I called him and he was, he was very okay with it. And then I sent it to Chip Sailor, who's my other neighbor, and Chip gave me some positive feedback as well about the changes we've made. And it's not just the setback changes we made. We kind of curved that driveway a little bit to save one of a, one of the very large trees down at the bottom of the property. I probably could have cut back on the footprint by, I don't know, a fraction of a percentage had we not curved the driveway. But I think our conversation at the last board meeting was do what's right to try to preserve the best you can. So that's what we did.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions from the board?
What, with the vote, Terrence, because, do we have to have a unanimous on this vote? I, I'm, I'm looking at my notes of whether or not the county, if the county denied, then we we have a super majority then, correct?
That's what I understand it.
Excuse me, go ahead, who's speaking?
Oh, sorry, Terrence, this is Brennan Marks. I've been listening. I've been having a little bit of a internet connection issue, issues here, but I think you guys can hear me, right?
Yeah, we have audio. Yep, go ahead.
Okay.
I was just, my question, my question was about, do we need a super majority vote? Because it was turned down by the, the county board.
Yeah, negative vote by the county requires four from us to approve. So on this one with Chip recusing himself, John will be voting. So we will have five voters, but we need four.
Okay.
Four out of five.
Okay. All right, I hear any other questions at this time from the board? We'll pause and, and open it up to anyone in the public for any comment or additional information they'd like to provide. Go ahead, Chip.
Yes, I just, this, the new plan certainly is much, much better, and I would support it totally. Very happy they could maintain that big spruce tree. The only thing I just would raise is on the, at the bottom, I can't move it down there, but they, they talk about a house height of thirty-five feet and required and, and actual greater than thirty-five feet. I think that must be a misprint.
I think we corrected that. There wasn't, there was a, yeah, it's twenty-three ninety-four, twenty-three point nine four feet height on the house. There was a, there was a typo, you're right, on the previous version of the map.
The residential Lake District is twenty-five feet. Yeah, so that's good. Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Any other comments on this application? From the board or from the public? All right, hearing none, Mr. Lewis, and I'll explain this for all the applicants tonight. When we are near the end of the public hearing, I'll ask if you're comfortable closing your application. And what that means is that the public hearing portion of the application will be closed. At that point, we don't take any additional information this evening. We will deliberate later on on every application that we close. But it's, it's your decision, Mr. Lewis, if you would like to close your application tonight.
Brennan, I think we're good, right?
Yeah, no, I think we're all set.
Yeah, okay. So when we close an application, we do have sixty-two days to vote and render a decision on an application. But we generally vote the same night that we close an application and hold our deliberations just for everyone's benefit. All right, our next application is for property at thirty-eight forty-four County Road sixteen. This property is sorry, I was reading off the agenda on the screen and then it got, it got moved on me. So this property, they're requesting the area variance to construct an accessory building six point one feet from the right of way, when sixty feet is the minimum requirement. The area variance for secondary structure, structure is also being requested in area variance for the restoration of a second driveway off of County Road sixteen. So we have a representative from Costage here to speak to this application or the applicant.
Yes, we do. We also have the applicant. I represent the applicant. My name's David Levy.
Okay.
And I'm also the attorney for the applicant.
All right, very good. So, Mr. Levy, you're more than welcome to go ahead unless there's somebody else from your team you want to lead the presentation.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to present Evan Giffel from Costage Engineering is, is with us as well.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Please feel free to interject with any questions at any time. Good evening. Again, my name's David Levy. That's L E V E is how we spell it. And I'm representing the applicant here, which is the owner of thirty-eight forty-four West Lake Road or County Road sixteen. The, the chair correctly, you know, described the variances sought. I thought we would start, might be good to get oriented and take a look at the existing conditions, the existing features of the site. The property is a approximately eighty thousand square foot property, about one point eight acres. It's in the RLD where the minimum lots, the minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet, as I'm sure you know. This is a property that's bisected by West Lake Road. The west portion of the property is about seventy-five thousand square feet. The east shoreline portion of the property is forty-six hundred square feet. The current improvements are a house with an attached garage where the cursor is pointed, thank you. That there is a detached garage to the west, as indicated there by the cursor. There's an old shed in the trees in the back closer to Wifles Road. And there is an asphalt and paper driveway from Wifles as indicated there. The original driveway in two thousand and seven, when the house was built, was from less West Lake Road, that was removed and the current drive from Wifles was installed by a prior owner in two thousand and eleven. And where the original driveway is, where the original driveway was, is a paver path that goes from the house down to to West Lake Road there, the gray indicated there. The existing building coverage is six point two percent, where the maximum is fifteen percent. While we're on the subject with the proposed improvements, the exit, the building coverage would go from six point two percent to six point four percent of, of a fifteen percent max. The existing lot coverage today is eighteen point eight percent of a twenty-five percent maximum with the proposals. The lot coverage would go to twenty point five percent from again eighteen point eight percent. Now I can talk through the proposed improvements and the related area variances. And maybe the overall site plan on sheet seven would be the most convenient to look at and zoom in as appropriate. The first improvement to discuss, or that that I'll discuss, is the one hundred square foot waterfront accessory structure, which would have a powder room and a sink. The area variances sought with respect to this improvement are, one, a, a front setback variance to allow a six point one foot setback from West Lake Road where sixty feet is required. And the second is an area variance for a second accessory structure by reason of the old shed that is in the, the southwest corner of the property there. The, the benefit sought by the hundred square foot accessory structure is an attractive and convenient structure providing certain facilities without which crossings of West Lake Road to go back to the house are necessary, bathroom refreshments, et cetera. The sixty foot front setback line from the east boundary of West Lake Road is well into the lake, you know. Therefore, you know, compliance with that setback is obviously impracticable. The accessory structure complies with all other area standards and is architecturally designed to harmonize with the house on the other side of West Lake Road. We don't believe there is any detriment to the health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood or community to be weighed against the benefit to the applicant if the requested variance is granted. The location of the accessory structure as proposed is typical for the neighborhood. A sample list of nearby properties where there are existing accessory structures located closer to the road than sixty feet are, I have four to mention. Thirty-eight fourteen West Lake Road, where the setback is four point seven six feet. Thirty-eight oh eight West Lake Road, where the front setback is about five feet. Thirty-seven ninety-six West Lake, again, about five feet. And then again, about five feet at thirty-seven ninety-two West Lake Road. We've submitted comments to, in response to the ECB's comments from their meeting last week. And at this time, I'd like to ask Evan Giffel of Costage to discuss some engineering design for this.
Sir. Evan Giffel of Costage, just gonna go over a quick, you know, brief summary. So the hundred square foot structure is up against the existing concrete wall that runs north-south along County Road sixteen. You, the finished floor is set at six ninety-four to be compliant with the current flood regulations. And the utilities will be punched through the wall and connected in the right of way of County Road sixteen. All erosion control and settlement practices will be in place during construction. And then the plan with the roof runoff is to kind of utilize the planting beds that surround the, the structure.
Thanks, Evan. So moving on to the second improvement, as to which a variance is sought, which is the restoration of the driveway from West Lake Road. And area variance sought here is for a second point of access. The benefit to the applicant sought here is to provide a safe, attractive, inconvenient driveway in its original location in the front yard of the property off of West Lake Road. The front of the house faces West Lake Road. The property address is thirty-eight forty-four West Lake Road. As mentioned earlier, when the house was originally constructed in oh seven, I believe it included a typical front yard driveway off West Lake Road in the same location as currently proposed, sorry. For our, for reasons not known to us in two thousand and eleven, a previous owner removed the driveway off West Lake and replaced it with a paver pathway. Restoring the driveway off West Lake in its original location will allow the owner to maintain the address for the property instead of having, you know, the inconvenience and confusion from changing the address to a lifeless road address. The driveway off of West Lake Road would provide a safer and more convenient access for the applicant, the applicant's guests, and also delivery vehicles. Currently, delivery vehicles park on the shoulder of West Lake Road, which we believe is not either convenient or optimal from a safety standpoint. Also, snow clearing in the winter has been challenging, giving, given the current driveway configuration. The also the, the driveway off of West Lake Road would provide an additional emergency, better access for emergency vehicles, you know, heaven forbid should be needed. Finally, this would also improve the, the width and the grade of the driveway for ingress and egress for small vehicles traveling to and from the shoreline parcel. Golf cart, tractor, something like that. Here, here too, we don't believe there is detriment to the health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood or community that weighs against the benefits if the variance were granted to the applicant. Both the existing driveway off life pools and, and the proposed off West Lake are typical, are typical driveway entrances. They're well located and safe. In addition, there is a deeded easement for access on the Wifles Road entrance to the neighboring property to the immediate south of the subject property. And again, if I could ask Evan to provide some design engineering comments for the driveway.
Sure. So the intent was to minimize disturbance, utilize the existing curb cut, and basically, you know, expand the width of that cart path to bring back what was there back in two thousand and eleven. You know, there's currently a stone line swell that runs on the south side of the path. The intent of that is to collect the sheet flow, dissipate the energy before it gets down to the bottom of the hill. You know, working with some ECB comments, we have no concerns that, that will continue to work with what we're proposing. We kind of pitched it towards it. And the applicant is, is willing to, you know, install a small drain structure that would help discharge it to the existing ditch along County Road sixteen.
Thanks. So that, that is our presentation. You know, for the reasons that, that we've outlined here and in, in our application materials, we think that the the standards for area variances are, are present and, and we would ask for them to be granted and would like to invite any questions that anyone may have.
I'm a resident to the north of the property on the lake side.
Mr. Ludwig, Mr. Ludwig, just a moment. We haven't called for public comment yet. We'll, we'll get to you in just a moment.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Let's start with questions from the board first.
I have a question. With the, the ECB concerns about the driveway, could you go through those again, their concerns and your, and your response?
Yeah. So I think the main concern was, you know, does the, the existing swell still provide, you know, sufficient? Will it continue to work as designed with the additional sheet flow from, you know, widening this into a driveway? And based on what we're sending there, we believe it is, but for, for added peace of mind, the client is willing to put a, a small drainage structure at the bottom towards where these, between the seven oh four and seven oh three in a pipe will be discharged inside of the hill to the ditch. So the water will collect, dissipate the energy and then discharge to the natural path.
Are there other of the ECB comments that you'd like us to talk about? We did submit a letter dated April fifteen, addressing ECB comments, but are, are there others? Specific, any, any other ECB comments that you'd like us to discuss tonight? Now?
Bob, anything specific or?
I was I, I, I wouldn't mind going over all of these if, if, if we could, I think we could do it succinctly if, if that would be okay with the, the app book.
Oh, sure, sure. Would you like to go through the ECB's comments or our letter that? Yeah.
Both.
Okay. Okay, so the
You want me to bring something up on the screen?
Um, I don't know, Chris, to me, maybe the, maybe the ECB comments themselves. I don't, I don't want to. Here they are. Yeah, so I guess I'd, I'd look for some guidance from the chair maybe on how to, you know, how to go through this.
Well, I think that's really, you know, Mr. Hilliard's question. I've, I've read these comments and responses. Okay, but I, you know, Bob, I'm not sure what specific one review or just all.
I did my homework, but without having the presentation, my notes really don't mean as much now to me as they do with the presentation. So I, I guess I had the concern about the, the driveway. And I think that your, your answer is good construction and a, and a plan for for drainage at that one spot, which, and the water eventually ended up in the ditch. You know, help me if I'm, if I didn't state that correctly.
No, that is, that is correct. Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I think that the way, the way we took the ECB's comments is, you know, we, we believe that the, the drainage was the principal environmental comment. The other comments, I I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I can, I can walk through the letter that we submitted, if you like, where the ECB, it, which responds to some comments from the ECB regarding deliveries and snow removal, the, the size of the lot and the lot coverage, et cetera.
If none of the other board members have questions, I, I can If none of the other board members have questions, I, I can. You know, I can be satisfied with what you've given me.
David, I've got some questions. I want to walk through these variances here. So for the driveway. And maybe Chip or others who may have been on the board at the time. I don't remember exactly what was the reason or rationale for moving the driveway to Westlake Road in 2011. I remember that being done on this property which used to be owned by the Westbrook family. But we generally do not, I stress, we generally do not permit two driveways on a residential parcel. You've got to have a really, really good reason. If your applicant wants the frontage and road access on Westlake for their driveway, are they willing to give up the driveway at the Wifels?
Well, we haven't, we haven't been asked that previously. We prefer not to give it up.
I think it's a question you need to discuss because I'm not, as one vote, I'm not in favor of multiple driveways on a residential parcel. Unless there's a serious safety issue and I haven't heard one that would justify here, particularly in this area where there's already congestion of traffic. And there's lots of driveways coming in and off of, of Westlake. I don't see the need to build a new one based upon what's been presented. So before I would personally be willing to consider that, I would want to know whether your applicant is willing to give up the driveway on Wifels.
Okay.
That's the driveway for me. Next, going to your accessory structure. I agree with the ECB comments that the accessory structure you already have is quite large and you're asking for a secondary. A second accessory structure, is your client willing to give up the accessory structure? On the upland parcel to the west of Westlake Road?
Um, we'd prefer not to. In fact, that's a, it's an old shed. That's, I think, I can't, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I think it's pre-existing non-conforming. And the owner would like to clean it up, would like to repair it and, and maintain it. It is.
Existing non-conformity certainly allows you to, to repair that existing structure that's larger than allowed. But now asking for a secondary structure, when you already have one larger than what is allowed is, is a significant step forward than what we have normally considered. In terms of the location, you know, my point of view for other members of the board maybe consider is I think that if you were to remove the existing structure. The proposed structure I think is in line in terms of location with what we'd see on the lake on other parcels. But for me, it's really, you know, these two requests that generally we haven't been very supportive of, which is two driveways for residential parcel. Without a significant safety issue or two accessory structures when you already have one that is well in excess. Of what is permitted for an accessory structure. Those are my comments. Any other board members?
Terrence?
Yep.
I think the reason we allowed that, and I'd have to go back, but I think, I mean, the original driveway was out to Westlake Road. Yeah, one, the one off of Wifels was new. And I think we allowed that because it also allowed access to the next door neighbors. I think that's why it was allowed, but I, I don't recall exactly.
No, that is coming back. Was there some discussion back then about the Westbrook family owning the parcel, the adjoining parcel to the south as well? I'm trying to think if it was something where Greg wanted one of those kids or something to live there.
I think, I think so, because remember there were like three areas on the beach that were going to be combined into one and.
Yeah, I can't remember. My recollection is that when we approved that driveway, it was on a condition that they removed the one to Westlake. We weren't going to give two then. And I'm not really of a mind to get to now.
Have to look back, yeah.
But other members of the board, before we open it up to the audience? Okay. We'll now take questions, comment from anyone in the audience. When you speak, just remember that this is a hearing of the board. So provide any information or comments you have to the board. We don't really allow direct discussion between applicants and members of the public. We'll give an opportunity to the applicant to answer any questions, provide additional information after public comment. But we want all, you know, discussion directed to the board. So Mr. Ludwig, you are first. Go ahead.
Well, actually, my name's Hugh Hamlin.
Okay, well, I just see Jerry Ludwig.
Sorry for barging in earlier, but yeah, I'm with my friend. He has the Zoom going, so I'm just participating with him. But my name's Hugh Hamlin. My wife's on the call as well remotely. Her name's Mary. And, and we live on the lakeside to the north of the property. So we just had some concerns that we wanted to express. We weren't really aware of all this work commencing until very recently. So we're trying to, you know, kind of catch up on all the, the plans, which I think could be very favorable for the property. But here are my three or four concerns. One. I thought I saw a plan for a second boat station on the north end of the lakeside property. Is that still a part of the plan? So there would be two boat hoist, boat stations on the lakeside?
So let's have Chris Jensen speak to that. We don't have a variance in front of us for a boat hoist.
So there is no application in front of us for a dock and mooring and docks and moorings are beyond the scope of the ZBA and planning board stuff. They're covered by our docks and mooring law.
Okay, it's just one of the drawings I saw had a prominent structure on the north side as it borders our property and it looked like a new boat station. So I don't know quite how to move forward with understanding what the plan is there.
I will just note for the record that the ECB comments do say that the lakefront improvements include construction of a second dock and covered boat hoist.
Yeah, they, they had an old plan. The new plan doesn't show it and it's not part of this application.
Cause that would be, there'd have to be an application to the DEC before that could be constructed, right, Chris?
No, the, the town and all the towns around the lake administered docks and mooring law for proposed docks.
Well, maybe this relates to my second question then, because in the drawing, it looks like there's a plan to put a, a break wall up, which will. Capture part of the lake and I'm just curious what kind of approvals are required to, to basically invade part of the lake to put up a break wall.
May I answer, Terrence?
Yeah, go ahead.
There is not a proposed break wall. It's shoreline stabilization riprap. It's an environment around our sound method. And they will be making application to the DEC prior to issuance of any permits.
Okay. And again, as I said, I'm just trying to catch up. I haven't had a lot of time to study the plans, but are there any height concerns with the accessory structure on the lakeside? In addition to the variance being applied for, is there a variance required for height or? Any input on that?
There is not a variance request right now for the height of that structure.
But would that be required? Is, is there a height that would violate the variance? I don't know.
Limits, Chris, do you want to speak? I don't know what the height proposed for that structure is.
Structure is listed at 12.5 feet by eight foot by 10 foot tall. The maximum in the town is 100 square feet and 10 foot tall, so no variance was required for height.
But I do want to just, Chris, clarify this question about a second hoist. So you're saying, I just want to make sure I understand, you're saying that there was an initial application for a second hoist, that that second hoist has been removed from their current plan?
No, there, the hoists and docks and moorings and everything. Are a separate application. There is no application made for installation of a dock, a mooring or a hoist.
So, so the plans are posted on the, the Kenan Dagewa zoning website or, or. Should be altered to not reflect that then?
They have been altered to not reflect that. The most recent plan details no additional dock hoist or anything.
Okay, well, I guess it must have happened since this morning when I looked on the site then.
Okay, so I, I may be missing the point, Chris. I just want to clarify for my benefit. So you're saying. The current plan has removed the second hoist, so they're no longer proposing a second hoist for this property.
No application was made for a hoist. There is no. At this time, we have no application for a hoist.
Okay. So you've not been asked to make a zoning law determination under the UDML about whether a second hoist would be permitted on this property, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and just for everyone's benefit, you know, if an application for a second hoist were to be made and Chris determined that it was not allowed under the UDML. The applicant's recourse then would be to file a variance application with the ZBA under the UDML. The town's ZBA does have the power to hear variance requests from the UDML, but. Mr. Hammond, we don't have an application for a second hoist at this point in time. So hopefully that's clear. I know it took me a little bit to get my head around it, but.
Yeah. One last thing is just a comment on the driveway. And this, this is recollection. We tried to reach the previous owner. To Westbrook basically today to understand why he hadn't maintained that driveway. So it's only my recollection that there was, was a pretty meaningful concern about drainage. And water coming down that driveway, of course, us being on the other side of the road would be the recipient of that water. So I'm just hopeful to speak to Greg Westbrook and understand why it is he removed the driveway. My concern is it could possibly be a drainage issue and I know you said you put in some drain structure, but I just would want to be quite sure that that's effective.
Any other question or comment on this application from anyone in the audience?
Yes, I'd like to just add something to my husband's comments. Though you're saying that there isn't right now an application for a second dock. If there were, it seems as though that would affect the building of another structure down there. According to the comments earlier, they were saying how congested it would be and that's our viewpoint as well as it would really be imposing on our property. I, I get frustrated to think that everything will be done and then they're going to put a second dock in and maybe you would have made a different decision if you'd known a second dock was going in. Maybe there's no way to foresee that, but. As their neighbor and we're very close to them, it, it, it is a big concern to us.
Understood. And, and just for, you know, the clarification there, Ms. Hamlin, what would happen is they would have to make an application for that. You know, without, we don't make zoning law determinations regardless. Our staff does. Chris Johnson would make that determination whether it was permitted or not. But I certainly understand your point. Chip, I saw your hand. Just give me one second to finish up with the public comment. Or you have what about their, their question? You want to get in quick, Chip, before we come back?
I was a little bit confused on the height of the structure.
Chris said 10 feet. It's at 10 feet, right?
Correct. Okay.
So it's at the maximum allowed height?
Okay.
All right. Any other question or comment on this application? Okay, we'll go back to the board. Any questions from the board? All right, we'll go back to the applicant, Mr. Levy or. I think it was Evan, right?
Yep, yep.
Yes. Thanks, thanks to all for your comments. You know, I think. I, I understand that. Terrence's comments regarding both the two driveways, two driveway entrances and the two accessory structures. I. You know, I, I don't have, I don't have a, a lot of knowledge of the history of such things in the town of Canada Daywatt. I, it, it's hard for me to understand. Not to be impolite or argumentative, but hard for me to understand the, the detriment caused by retain, on a, on a large property such as this. I don't, I'm having a hard time with why a, you know. Otherwise compliant, except for that front setback. You know, structure on the water with a bat, you know, with a powder room and a sink well-designed, et cetera. Would be objectionable solely because of, of a longstanding existing shed at, at the other end of the property. I guess I, I kind of appreciate a better understanding of the rationale for that. Yeah.
So particularly in the RLD, we have a concern about the overpopulating of structures. Every structure increases runoff from the roof, which goes into the lake. That's why our code only allows one accessory structure. So traditionally in my time on the board, now 14 or 15 years, I've always taken a dim view of multiple accessory structures above what's allowed by code in the RLD. In particular. So it's, it's nothing against this specific project. It's a standard that I have applied. In my own voting for years to all parcels in the RLD. It's a, is the zoning district of most important impact on the lake. So I want to see a very good justification for more structures than were allowed before I'd vote for one. And where you already have a large structure, that's just my own personal view. That's my rationale for it.
Isn't that more of, you know, isn't that more a function of, of lot coverage than? You know, I, that doesn't the coverage limitation control, you know, impervious and et cetera. You know, more than a, more than a number of structures limitation would, wouldn't it?
Not necessarily. I mean, I understand your argument. My view is that the town code is there for reason. The board has, or the town board has felt that it wants to limit the number of structures. And in the RLD, I, I view it pretty strictly.
And. I'm sorry, this is Kelly. If I could chime in for a quick minute, I apologize. Your neighbor, the neighbor just down the road actually had a similar issue. And, and, you know, he had circumstances that were, you know, I guess similar. So we've, this is not something that we have been taken lightly and we've actually. Denied in the past. So just to, you know, give you a reference, this isn't unique. We, this is kind of common practice as a board. Just for Terrence's purposes, I just thought I'd give you a, for instance, that this isn't, you know, this isn't obviously just that particular property.
Thanks.
And Terrence, can I also comment in regard to the, the runoffs and the size of the lot? There's not an issue here about building coverage or lot coverage. There's plenty of, you know, that's the reason why this, the, the, the building is not an issue. The accessory structures are and that's, I agree with you on that. It's. There, there's plenty of, no issue with building your lot coverage on this.
Could I just ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
I, I can't keep, I, I know I'm keeping going back to that second dock. Does the attorney or anyone else know why they decided to remove the second dock from your plans? Because until pretty recently, that was in there from what we saw.
I, I can explain. The, the dock, the second dock is of interest to the owner. It's not that it was, it's not that it was part of the application and then removed. It, it is something that the owner is contemplating and would like to do. But it's not required to be in an application to the zoning board or the planning board. So in, in talking to the town about the overall project. The second dock was shown to say, this is what we're thinking. And we understood from the zoning officer in the town that it's not, it's not part. It's not properly something to be submitted to the zoning board or the planning board. So that's why it's not on these application drawings, because it's not, you know, it's, it's not a zoning board matter or a planning board matter. It would rather be provided it's in compliance with the town docking and mooring law. And Chris, you'll correct me if I'm wrong. It, it would be submitted to the town in compliance and be decided administrated. It, it would be submitted to the town in compliance and be decided administratively by.
So in other words, you're probably going to do it. It's just you're not showing it now.
Probably going to do it. I mean, it's, it's perhaps, perhaps the owner will, will do, will continue to want to do that and apply for a permit for it.
Well, we have the opportunity in some different format or forum to express our concerns or at least provide some input on the impact of that dock on neighbors.
Absolutely.
So this is this discussion I think is important, Mr. Levy, and particularly given the comments from our environmental conservation board where they have this concern about the visual, you know, clutter, for lack of a better word, down there on the lakeside with your proposed accessory structure. You know, you've said several times that this is not the issue of the boat hoist, something that would appropriately be before the zoning board. But the zoning board is the board that hears a variance if needed from the U D M L. And I don't know what the determination would be from the, from the development office about whether a second hoist is permitted on your parcel under the U D M L. So I don't think it's really fair yet to say that we're not appropriately, you know, part of this process. Until you have a zoning law determination saying you have the ability to have a second hoist, for me, it impacts the, the whole, the whole project.
Well, look, I'm not, I'm not looking to jump the gun or, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking to put a square peg in a round hole in any, in any way. When in designing, in designing the second dock as conceptually, you know, thought about. It, the engineers drew it with the intent for it to be in compliance with talking and mooring law. Whether it is or whether it isn't, yeah. I guess Chris would decide, but that was the intent with it, that it would be in compliance. But I'm not saying, I'm just saying inappropriate, I'm just saying it's not part of this application really as, as, you know, directed to us by the town. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, say that the zoning board in all circumstances wouldn't have a look at a second dock. Yeah, I agree. If it, if it weren't compliant, we'd be back before you to talk about it, no doubt. Agreed.
Could I interject again? This is Hugh Hamlin.
Go ahead, Mr. Hamlin.
Thanks, Terrence. One of our concerns beyond the visual and the congestion kind of thing is that even with the dock and the, the current dock where it currently is on the other side of the lakeside property, there have been some issues which I would categorize as safety issues with boats and jet skis kind of coming in at an angle through our, in front of our cottage where there have been some near misses. I'm not suggesting that the owners of this property would behave that way, but I think those kinds of incidences just kind of come along with dock congestion in a tight area such as we're both trying to coexist in, in that, you know, in our waterfront edge as well as, as the ones we're discussing now. So I, I think it's a bigger issue that should be considered. I just don't know how that would be considered and discussed in the future, but I think it's an important thing to think about.
All right, thank you. One final call for comment from the board. All right. Mr. Levy, you comfortable closing the application? I have the opportunity to talk to your, to your client about removing the Wifel's driveway or removing that second structure.
Yeah, you're, can we keep the hearing open? And is that, I'm sorry, you said close the application or?
Yeah, you have two options. We can close the application and that, you know, just to recap, what that means is that we don't take any additional information. We'll proceed when we finish our hearings tonight to deliberate and then likely vote on it. Or we can keep the public hearing open to our next regularly scheduled date, which would be the third Tuesday in May. I don't have the day off at the top of my head, but whatever date that falls on. And then you can come back and speak to this application with additional information, particularly probably, you know, a response to my question about whether you really need two driveways and two accessory structures.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I appreciate everyone's attention and, and comments and I'd like, I'd like to request keeping the hearing open so that the applicant can consider all the comments and communicate about it and then come back next month.
Great. Well, with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn this application to the May public hearing date. Do we have a second? Second from Chip, all in favor? Aye. Aye, okay, we're adjourned on this one. Next, we have property forty six eleven dual road. The applicant seeking an area variance to erect a thirty foot by thirty two foot, that's nine hundred and sixty square feet pole barn with one hundred feet, within one hundred feet of a water course. It's proposed. It's proposed a forty feet from the east. It's proposed to be forty feet from the east and thirty two feet on the south. So, Mr. Beckwith?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, I'm late. I have computer problems.
No problem.
We, the last time we spoke, there was an issue about the height. And you, I think you suggested adding a shed roof on. I, I didn't have a time to amend my paperwork, but I, I'd like to put a ten foot shed roof off the, be the north side. And I would have to adjust the building over like five feet. So that would be five feet more on the south water course.
Okay.
And the square footage would go to twelve hundred and eighty, and that would allow over twelve foot for my lift.
So I, I apologize, Mr. Beckwith, if we've heard this application before. It's not ringing a bell for me. Have we seen this before, Chris?
No, he's not saying we've seen this before. He's saying
variance board, it was with the, the town.
Okay.
So we haven't received updated application or updated site plan. So that, that's your call, Mr. Robinson.
Well, we've been very consistent as a board. Certainly my view that I don't like to vote on an application when I don't have a plan to show me what is being proposed. I know we have this plan which is showing, what is it, sixty eight feet to the stream? And Mr. Beckwith, you're saying you're going to move it?
It's sixty eight on the south side, so it'd be sixty three. If I, by adding the shed, the ten foot shed on the, the shed, shed would be on the north side, but I'd have to adjust the building to the south a little bit.
Okay. Well, I don't know, I can't speak for the other, but I would certainly see a, a plan that shows there's going to be an addition to.
Mr. Beckwith, did you say that the size of the structure would be?
Application tonight, or if you want to request an updated site plan?
Well, you want me to amend the paperwork showing the shed roof? And the adjustment with the numbers for the setback into the water course? Is what you're saying? You want, and then put it on to the next meeting?
Yeah, well, I want to hear from the board. That's my general, you know, way that I operate on the board is I want to, before I vote, to have a plan that actually shows the structures where they are, are proposed. And, and you're modifying that. So I would want an updated plan, but I'm not sure how the other board members feel.
Terrence, didn't he, Mr. Beckwith, did you say that you increased the size of the building by, well, it went from what, nine sixty to twelve hundred?
Yeah, the twelve, twelve eighty, because you can't have over twelve foot ceiling under a thousand square foot. The development office, when we discussed it before, he, I forgot who it was, but he suggested that I had a shed, shed roof building off the one side to increase the square footage to allow for the higher than twelve foot ceiling. I need at least twelve six. My plan shows fourteen.
To me, that just seems like there's an, it's an additional need for maybe a better plan, just so.
Hey, I can update it and modify it if that's what you want.
Well, I'm not hearing support from the board for voting on it without an updated plan unless I'm misreading it. If, if I am, speak up, any member of the board? Okay.
I think an updated plan would be good. I would, I would like to see an updated plan, please.
Well, let's, let's adjourn it to May, Mr. Beckwith, so you can provide an updated plan. I'll make a motion that we do that. A second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, my internet connection was going out. Did we have a second on the motion to adjourn?
Yes, we did.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we'll adjourn that to next month.
Okay, thank you. I'll get that updated and I'll get it into you.
Thank you.
Terrence?
Yes.
Could we get a sketch maybe of the structure just to help us understand a little bit more about?
I, I have the, the sketch of the building and I have the site plan
Okay.
in there already. I'll, I'll update all of that. So it's, it shows what it is.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Beckwith?
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Next, we have an application for property forty seven ninety nine. Can I wrote sixteen? They're seeking a variety of variances. First is a twenty five point three foot rear setback for the primary structure when thirty feet's required. Number two is six point eight feet side setback for the primary structure when ten feet's required. Number three, a two foot side setback for an accessory structure being a garage when ten feet's required. Number four, a nine point three foot setback for an accessory structure being a shed when ten feet's required. Number five, a twelve point six foot rear setback for an accessory structure, the shed when fifteen feet's required. And number six, lot coverage of thirty five point three feet, or excuse me, thirty five point three percent when thirty percent is the maximum allowed in the zoning district. So who will be presenting for this application?
I'll start out. My name is Greg McMahon. I'm with McMahon LaRue. We're the engineers and surveyors and also on the call tonight is Eli Futterman, who's the property owner and Jack Seagrest, who's the architect. So they'll be able to address issues that I am not able to, but just as a summary, the Futtermans have purchased this parcel. They currently own the property just to the south. There's a shared access to both of their properties now. It's a, it's kind of a unique parcel. It's only ten thousand, seven hundred square feet. And it's bordered on all sides except the south side by either a, an unnamed class C creek and Canada Daywa Lake. There's an existing two-story cottage on the property and an existing garage. The proposal is to demolish both of those structures and to construct a, a new structure and a new garage. We can now start out the, the garage, the existing garage is I think a little less than two feet off that, we'll call it the, kind of the south property line. The new garage is realigned and would be with a two foot off of that property line. And the new house is proposed in approximately the same location, other than it's moving south. The, the existing house has a setback less than two feet off of that property line and we're going, right now it's at six point eight and that's a setback to a roof line on an entryway. The, so that, that is the, with regard to the setbacks, we're, we're relatively close to what the current setbacks are, what are the rear setbacks off of the lake. And the third structure being proposed is a, a small storage shed located near the waterfront for, for storage of equipment and so forth. And that again, is ten by ten, a hundred square feet, but looking for variances for the setbacks of both rear and side off of that. We'll call it the north line, which abuts the drainage way. The, the creek that comes down through there has in various spots, concrete walls on both sides. The owner is currently working with a contractor who has a request for a permit into the D E C to do some additional improvements on that creek bank to stabilize it. And, and again, we're not, that's not part of this application and I'm not involved in that. That's being handled through D E C by a contractor. So that's a, a quick summary of what's being proposed. As far as our, we are asking for setback variances, but in, in a majority of the cases, they are greater than the existing structures that currently sit on the site.
So, Mr. McMahon, let's go through those because that would be helpful for me.
Sure.
Have front and present in my mind. So your first request, twenty five point three rear setback, what is it existing?
The existing setback, we're talking the house. It is twenty eight point six. And we're, we're requesting twenty five point three. That's the rear setback.
All right. So that one is moving a little closer to the property line, right?
Yes.
All right, let's take the second one. This is your
Side setback.
Side setback for the house.
Yeah. The, the existing side setback is one, one point nine five feet. And we're proposing six point eight feet.
Okay. Number three, this is your side setback for the garage.
The side, the existing side setback is one point eight six and we're requesting two.
Okay. Next, we have your side setback for the shed.
There, well, there is, yes, we're requesting, the, the code is ten feet. We are requesting nine point three. The rear setback is fifteen and our request was at twelve point six.
And there's no existing shed, right? That's just a new structure.
That is, that's, that would be the, yes, a totally new structure.
All right. Now, we have generally been pretty strict on lot coverages in the R L D. I would appreciate at least a discussion about, you know, you're going from thirty, which is permitted, up to thirty five. What is the existing lot coverage of the home that's in garage there to be torn down?
Okay, the, the existing lot coverage is twenty seven point nine percent. And our request brings that up to thirty five point, I believe it's three percent. So we're, we're again, requesting about five percent above the code. Again, that's largely due to the, you know, the amount of pavement on the site that is necessary to, to access the garage and just to provide area for parking. Again, it's a very small parcel at the end of a shared driveway. And there's, there's very limited space for And there's very limited space for parking and maneuvering automobiles on this site.
Yeah, I mean, you know, for me, that's a challenging aspect of this application, to be candid with you, is the the jump from, you know, basically twenty-eight percent lot coverage up to thirty-five is a significant jump. And you're taking a compliant parcel and lot coverage, which really impacts the lake and making it a non-compliant parcel. But I understand the rationale you're putting forward. What questions do we have from members of the board?
I'd like to ask you about the ECB concerns, especially the septic. And here your response.
Yes, we are cognizant of the issues. The existing home is a very, very old cottage. I understand there's not even a bathroom in the cottage. And we assume there's some type of a very old onsite septic system. What we're currently looking at, as we move forward with this, I've had conversations with the watershed inspector, is that there's a portion, since Mr. Futter, at the Futterman's own, both of these parcels, there is an area on the Futterman's parcel uphill. There's a two-car, looks like a two-car pull-off for parking as you come down the driveway. If you look to the north of that, there's a relatively level area that we're looking at for design of a new leach field. This would have a new treatment unit due to the fact that we're, you know, we're within the distance of the lake that would require. And we would be pumping the sewage septic up to that leach field. Again, we had preliminary discussions with the watershed inspector. What this would involve, and we haven't come to a final decision yet. It could involve the re-subdivision of these two lots to incorporate that area into the smaller lot. Or could be done by easement for the leach field in that area. And that's under discussion right now. But those are the plans to accommodate the septic from this site.
And that was mentioned, and also the Class C creek, if I have that terminology right. There were questions about, about its viability, especially with the garage being so close, and just the creek itself. And what can be done to maintain that? So I guess what I'm saying is the ECB, with what they put out through these big questions in my mind, and I'm just, you know, trying to put myself in your shoes, wondering, you know, what's the order of events? What do you take care of first before you can make sure that you can put forward your plans?
Well, what we're looking at now is what our options are on the site. We, as far as the creek goes, I mean, we certainly, you know, unfortunately, the setbacks from the creek due to the size of the lot are minimum there. Where the existing house is located now and where the new house is, there are concrete retaining walls at that location, channeling the creek. There are other walls that are shown on the plan that will remain. And as I say, there are other improvements that a contractor is working on with the DEC to get the necessary permits to do slope stabilization. The existing garage and house have been there for many, many years. There's been no evidence of any erosion or any undermining of any of those structures. So there's not a concern for the stability of the site. It's the owner's intent to add additional protection to that stream and adding further protection for any development that occurs on the site.
All right, we have any other questions from the board?
Wouldn't, if you're talking about incorporating the septic system over in another part, until that's resolved, I mean, that makes your lot coverage problem go away. I'm just wondering about the order here. I guess I agree with sort of what Bob said.
Yes, we did, as a matter of fact, we did take a look at that lot coverage. And if this were resubbed, if we did bring that, it's approximately twenty-eight hundred square feet in, into this new lot, then our lot coverage issue does go away, brings us under the thirty percent. You know, that's certainly something we're evaluating right now.
With the new garage, it looks like you're going to cut off that one angle there, and which will put in new pavement. I guess the question would be, there be any way of cutting down on some of the pavement to the house side of the garage?
Well, yeah, there'd be a small, not that it doesn't reduce the impervious. There's a small amount of that pavement that gets reduced with the footprint of the new house. But again, the issue is if, you know, more than, more than two or three automobiles, if the more pavement you eliminate, it just, it becomes an issue of not having sufficient room to park a reasonable number of cars. So what, with that, what the reason we cut that corner in there was to allow, you know, the vehicles to swing and make that entrance. It's just a, it's just a single car garage. Allow, you know, the car to enter it and also be able to back out and maneuver to go back up the driveway.
Any other questions from the board?
You can speak.
All right, we'll open this up to the public. Any questions from anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this application?
Hello?
Yep.
I'm Jack Seagrest, the architect. I just wanted to comment a little bit on the lakefront setback. The house directly to the south, we did some research on a different project. But we also found that this existing house, which is probably an old nineteen hundreds house, is twenty feet off of the property line. And addition to the north, there's a new build that these property, or the front setback, lake setback, I'm sorry, was reduced to sixteen feet. And I was just wondering, is there any variance or any adjustment there that we can accept? That we can push it towards the lake a little bit more? It's pretty, pretty tight now.
You've got a hand raised by Mr. Futterman.
Yeah, I'd like to speak, just to give you a little bit of a context as to what the project is and why we're doing this project for the board members. First of all, when we did the pictures, and I saw somebody posted them before, of our property of forty-eight oh three, we provided and received variances using both Jack and Greg to do the work that they're doing. This property, our original intent was to try and rebuild it, although it has no bathroom, no plumbing inside it, other than, I guess it may have running water, I'm not exactly sure. But what we want to do is keep the integrity of what we consider the jewel of Kandagwa Lake, which is having, you know, cottages. So we're not looking to build a McMansion here. We built it really just to have for our children who enjoy coming down on the weekend. You know, what comes first is, you know, we know we need the septic system, and we know that septic system has to be approved by the town. And we have multiple areas that we can either work through that by either leasing, needing more property to reduce the coverage, or having an easement. Either one of those are going to be factors to determine what makes the most amount of sense, once we kind of go next step, which is first we got to get a set of plans, get a set of variances, and then know what we're going to do. You know, Jack has done multiple properties on the lake. I've talked to our neighbor to the north of us, who I believe is online, Norinas Salerno is online, and Adam Smith himself. We provided the board copies of letters that they're both in, what's it called? Support of this project. We want to keep the lake, beautiful lake, and we want to have a beautiful cottage on it. You know, the parking issue is, you know, we're just trying to have a one-car garage there so that we can do a better job than what we're doing right now, that it doesn't really get used. And it is a little bit tight when you have, you know, a couple of cars, although we can park up top, and we own the lot up on the top also. So, you know, we want to keep the property to kind of be the context of what was there before with just, you know, bringing it into the 21st century. The guy that lived there, I don't know how he lived there until he was in his mid-seventies without a bathroom. But so he did better than I could have. So that's what we're looking for. And I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the members of the board provide can ask.
Okay. Well, do we have any other comment or question from the board?
I would, I'd just like to recap what was just said. It's possible that the lot coverage percentage could be reduced while they are taking care of their septic situation. So again, you know, taking care of, you know, the first priority or the highest priorities first might end up helping this applicant.
Yeah. This issue about the septic system, I think, is an important one. I've said it before, and I've been pretty consistent in this, that, you know, significant variances for lot coverage in the RLD are generally not approved. But I'm one vote of five, I think if you were to look at a lot line adjustment to bring in area for septic that would remove the need for that variance, I think that would certainly be a positive step. I'm not sure how that would impact the adjoining lot that Mr. Futterman owns, if it would make that lot non-compliant. I'm just not sure of those details, and that would certainly impact it. But I think we have
I think, just, Mr. Robinson, I think that's the issue at hand. We're not sure which, we don't want to be out of compliance on one, to be compliant on the other. So again, to your point, we're kind of going, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? We know we have to put a septic system in, and we know we have to be compliant. And the only place to do it is on the land that I have to the south of the application.
And I got you. What I'm saying, Mr. Futterman, at least for my vote, it's unlikely that there would be a positive vote for this large of a variance for lot coverage, regardless of either parcel. I'm not generally in favor of going beyond the lot coverage in the RLD, when at all possible to avoid. So I think my suggestion would be that maybe we adjourn this application for you guys to look into these aspects and potentially bring back a revised plan if you feel that it's appropriate. But your application, if you want to go forward and have us close the hearing and vote tonight, we can certainly do that.
I think that would be, that you basically said you're going to vote it down, so I don't think that would be my smartest move.
Well, I would vote, I would vote. I like to be candid with
I want to be a team player. I want to be a team player. I don't want to be one that, you know, we'll adjourn it until, and we'll allow Jack and Greg to regroup.
All right.
Do I automatically get back on for next month, just to, we'd like to try and start construction in the fall?
Yes, so I'm going to make a motion to that effect. I'd make a motion that we adjourn this application to the May public hearing date. Is there a second?
Second.
For Bob, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Raise a hand, I didn't hear you. Yeah, okay. All right, great. So we'll adjourn this. Why should I ask any names? I didn't, everyone voted yes, but just for clarity of the record. Okay, next we have property at thirty-four thirty-nine West Lake Road. This parcel is seeking an area variance for a fifty-five point one foot setback for my stream for the placement of a new single-family dwelling. Who's going to speak to this application?
Terrence, Anthony Venecia, representing for this project.
Go ahead, Anthony.
So, a little background on this project is the Vesuvius's are planning on doing a new home in the RLD. And part of the new home project is requiring us to get a setback from a Class C stream, a DC Class C stream that runs along the southerly portion of the property. Recently, the two, this property that was owned by the Cooks was subdivided, not subdivided, but they did some lot line revisions that we helped them out with. And we use that stream as the dividing line between the northerly lot and the southerly lot that they recently sold. I mean, going forward, the Vesuvius's are planning the house that you see in front of you. And part of the project requires us to get this setback from the stream. I'd like to, I don't know if Chris is there, and he can pull up Encore. I would like to show the town, the board, a couple older images. When the Cooks bought the property a few years back, they did knock down a few homes. One of the homes that was currently on this, the parcel that the Vesuvius's own straddled the actual stream. So they had a garage that was basically on top of it. There are some pretty accurate images that Encore shows from previous years of photography. You can pull that up. Yeah, here we go. So while we bring this up, portion of this project, it's a joint effort between the Vesuvius's and the Reinharts, which are up next. It's a similar variance needs to be done for their project going forward. They're on the south side of the stream. Part of this project is going to be a joint application with the DEC and more or less likely the Corps to to reestablish this stream and create a stream that works better for the property, widen it, clean it, you know, beautify it a little bit, because right now, the current stream has a lot of old retaining walls that are wood, concrete that are going to be taken out, and we're going to, we're going to create more of an open swell between the two homes and basically create a better channel for water to flow through. Can you, Chris, can you go back to about 2010 image? So there's the 2010 image from when the Cooks bought the property. So you can see it, the multiple structures have been torn down on these premises over the years to create these larger lots for development. So, I mean, that's kind of the background. If there's any questions about design of the houses or stormwater things of that nature, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So Anthony, just using this image, walk me through this here, so.
So, the old house, the
Just let me get my question out first, real quick, Anthony. What I'm just confused about, you can probably easily explain it. So I see, you know, the stream going right So I see, you know, the stream going right through and it looks like directly underneath this house, but then there's also another little blue line on the map that bends to the south and then back out to the east to the lake. What is that supposed to be?
That is an inaccurate representation on Encore of the blue line stream. So the blue line stream, it goes under the house and if you can kind of see, if we go to a, a more current image, there's a deck that was covered over there that basically you can kind of see how it goes out. There's a decking that covers, that is gonna be take, the decking is gonna be taken out and we're gonna reintroduce a grassy, uh, the plan is from where that deck starts to the lake is to, is to re, regrass it, turf it, and then keep the opening where it is and reestablish that opening. To create a, a more, a more viable swell that's gonna go through there and take the water better than it does now.
Okay.
And also the, the way that these property lines, uh, they haven't updated the property lines. Now the property line for these two parcels runs right down the centerline of that swell. And then we do, I believe the town has a colored image of the joint properties on the landscape plan. There. So you can see what we're, the plan that we are um presenting is gonna be influenced by the stream and and, and widening it, making the stream uh flow better. We're gonna introduce a couple open weers to slow down the travel of that water before it hits the lake.
Okay, Anthony, so just talk me through that. You know, I see on your plan here and I'm trying to read the.
Yeah, I'm actually, the, the landscape architect is here, Dan Hackett, so he can kind of walk you through the design of that stream and I'll put him on right now.
Yeah, I want to get some clarity, Dan, for what, what are you using to convey the water to the lake? It looked like maybe a cement, underground cement channel or something, or what are you doing?
No, no, currently the entire uh, the entire swell is channelized. And at the end, um, where it's channelized and armored with concrete, there's a deck over that, so that would be on the east side. So, um, currently Aaron is finishing up the calks and the total stormwater. There is a, uh, there's an overflow issue coming out from underneath West Lake Road. The idea is to open up this channelized swell into a pretty in swell. Install weers. Weers will do two things. They'll help uh slow the velocity. They'll also help take pollutants out. When water is filled with sedimentation, it hits the weir and it actually drops behind the weir. So by widening this and introducing it more as a, a true repidient swell, then there'll be a series of rain gardens. And that plan was sent in. The rain gardens are elevated above the swell, so all of the onsite water can go to the rain garden, infiltrate into the swell and basically remove all the pollutants before anything goes to the lake. So the idea is, again, to try to enhance the lake. As far as on the east side, the proposal is to leave the channelized swell. It's already there. There's a large uh, basically a box culver with a deck over it. And what both clients would like to do, um, so the north and south property would like to have lawn. Uh, their houses are setback pretty generously from the lake and it would just be a lawn area between the two homes. So that's, that's what we're showing in that proposal.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry if I'm missing it. Just explain this for me. So on the eastern side, your plan, you know, shows it kind of ending there with some stone and then it's grass from there to the lakeshore.
So, what there is now currently, under that deck is a concrete channel. And we are right now, we are going through the calks to make sure that that concrete channel can take the amount of water that we have to count. We have to do the, run the calks and finish the calks. So that will either stay in place, the existing one, as long as it can, it can handle the, the appropriate flow. If it cannot, it'll be upgraded to handle what we calc out.
Okay.
The goal is not to have that swell separating totally the two properties. There's also, there's also a um sewer line that runs through there and we don't want to cut that out and ex, and have the the sewer line any shallower than it is now. So that's one of the reasons that we're not open swelling it is to kind of keep our separation from that sewer line that runs across the frillage.
Okay. Well, I apologize for that detour, but thanks. I understand. Um, what other questions do we have from the board? All right, well, we'll maybe mulling this one still a bit. Let me open up to the public and see if there's any comments from anyone in the audience on this application. All right, we'll come back to the board. Okay, it sounds like we're, we're pretty set on this then. Anthony, are you guys comfortable closing?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Well, that will close and we'll go into the, I'll call it the, the sibling application for the parcel to the south. Same stream, although the difference here is that the setback is slightly larger at thirty four thirty nine at sixty five point one feet here on thirty four forty three. It's gonna be eighty point eight feet.
Correct. And, and yeah, the, the same goes for this house. The one thing that's really controlling the location on this house is there are multiple easements that surround this. There's sewer line easement to the east and to the south. The gas line easement to the west and a, a, a water line easement to the south. So this house is kind of designed to fit in between those particular easements that are there. Um, it's, you know, it's generous. It's, it's over a hundred feet away from the lake. It's just we're into that, you know, that, that stream setback that we're, we're kind of playing with, so.
All right. Well, do we have any questions from the board on this application? Okay. All right. And Anthony, you comfortable closing on this one as well?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we'll go back now and begin our deliberations. We'll begin with uh, property forty two ten. We generally conduct our deliberations in the same order in which we heard the applications. So I'll kick this one off. I think that this is an example of a good um outcome based on communication and discussion between neighbors. I'd be in, in support of the changes that have been made to this application and these two variances.
I feel the same way. I think the uh, the applicant uh showed some flexibility and uh, and maybe if we didn't meet in the middle, at least we uh, you know, I feel that uh, there was some giving of ground.
Yeah. All right. Well, Chris, why don't you call this one? I don't hear any other discussion.
Okay. The applicant is requesting an area variance for ten foot side setback when twelve foot is minimum allowed for the primary structure. Shall the applicant be granted a two foot side setback area variance? Case, I don't know. Is Casey voting on this one?
Yeah, let me quickly interrupt here. I forgot to mention, and just for the record, there was a recommended denial from the county, so we do not need the super majority. We mentioned it earlier, but I just want to make sure we had that before we started voting. So go ahead, John.
Yes.
John, Bob?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Uh, Terrence?
Yes.
Okay.
You've got on the vote though, you've got Chip voting. I think you want to change the box. Yeah, to Kelly. Yeah.
All right, we will. This is my copy on my home computer, so it won't be, it's the office one.
Okay.
I'm trying to read the rationale. Did you already put together an opinion for me, Chris?
I don't know if I did, but maybe someone did.
Well, I take that as a vote of no confidence.
We have any other variants to vote on, don't we?
What was that?
Yeah, the other one.
Yeah, we still have another one.
Sorry. Uh, applicant is requesting an area variance for lot coverage, requesting twenty six point six when twenty five percent is the maximum allowed. Shall the applicant be granted a one point six area variance? John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Terrence?
Yes.
All right.
So put your, your um, yeah, window there on the rationale for the first one. Let me see what I want to add to it. So the first variance we'll be doing is uh lot coverage. For some reason, our public hearing, Chris, we called it parcel coverage.
A lot of the parcel.
Okay.
Yeah, this might just be a cut and paste from another project.
Yeah, this is another project. So let me, let me just give you one here. Let's just put some language in. Okay, the board's decision is based on the descriptions and drawings provided um during the public hearing held April twenty two thousand twenty one, as well as uh, on other dates that development office will fill in those submission dates and the board has determined that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or the community, therefore the variance is granted. With regard to the area variance uh for lot coverage, the board has considered the lot coverage of adjoining parcels and found that it is in keeping with unique character of the neighborhood. Granted, this variance is minimal and will not have an adverse effect on the property. Because of the configuration of lock, um, the length of the driveway and the location of the home uh were adjusted in order to accommodate concerns from neighboring residents. And then we'll put as standard conditions that the variance is specific to the most recent plan submitted to the Z B A and any change in the plan shall validate the variance. And second, that the variance is conditioned on a building permit being issued within one year of the date the variance is granted and failure to obtain the building permit or building permits, I should say, within one year shall invalidate the variance. And Chris, if you can use the same language for the decision on the second variance with the exception that I wanted to add in the following finding of fact for the setback that the setback, the side setback is an improvement on the existing setback. It's been considered and reviewed by the neighbor to the north and has been consented to. Now, for anyone on the board, any other fact, findings of fact you want to add in on any of these?
I have a couple.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I believe I heard during the conversation that the driveway was relocated to save that silver maple that was up front.
Yep.
I don't know if that's worth noting. And I would also note that the applicant used permeable pavers for their entire driveway and I believe the entry into the back of the house as well.
Yeah, let's put that on the first uh variance, the, the lot coverage variance.
Hey, Terrence, the tree is a blue spruce. Not, I have a maple, but that's coming down, but the one that Chip and, and we all want to save is the blue spruce, just to make sure.
All right, very good. Um, let's go on to our next. So we continued thirty eight forty four, County Road sixteen. We continued forty six eleven dual road. Uh, we continued forty seven ninety nine County Road. So we're to the two um sibling applications at thirty four thirty nine West Lake and thirty four forty three West Lake.
So applicant is requesting an area variance sixty five point one foot setback from a water course when a hundred foot is minimum required. Shall the applicant be granted a thirty four point nine foot area variance for setback from the water course?
Just one second before we vote, Chris. We, we haven't, I don't want to assume anything. We haven't deliberated at all. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss on this? Dave?
Am I correct to, to assume that this is to be an improvement on the, on the chances of stormwater going in, into the lake? They're both sizable properties. There's not issues of, of lot coverage or building coverage. So from what I take on this thing, this is hopefully an improvement. Am I correct on that or is the board?
I, whether it works or not, it's, it's hopeful that it will improve the situation. Uh, I feel the same way you do, Dave. It's like a positive step.
Yeah. I think this will be a market improvement over what's, you know, been there before and, and I think it'll be good for the lake.
And I'm not used to sibling uh, um, applications like that. So this is a new one for me and uh, I'm glad I was around you folks. Uh, I feel like a pioneer.
Yeah. Yeah, this one is uh, you know, really interesting how they, they share that right down their property line, so. All right, Chris, I think we are ready now.
Okay, sorry for jumping the gun.
No problem.
Shall the applicant be granted a thirty four point nine foot area variance for setback from a water course? Bob?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Chip?
Yes.
Terrence?
Yes. So for this uh application, our big decision is based on descriptions and drawings provided to the board at the public hearing on April twenty 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 one and on the additional dates that will be filled in by the development office. The board has determined that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or a community, therefore the variance is granted. Uh, this variance is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The, this parcel has been a residential parcel in the past, although the pre-existing home was torn down. This proposal will um ensure that the stream is improved and it's located along the southern property line of the parcel. The board has determined that uh there will be no significant environmental impact on the stream from this, uh, from the approval of this variance. The applicant has indicated that they are going to uh substantially improve the flow of the stream, uh, which will be a positive um environmental outcome for the parcel. Um, anything else anyone wants to add in terms of findings of fact on that one?
It's, you know, I know that they had mentioned they're gonna do the, do a test of, you know, to see if it can handle um, the amount of water going down there. Do we, do we add any language in? Is that what we're required to do? What are your thoughts?
Um, you know, that's a good question. I'm not sure how members of the board, I think, Kelly, what you're saying is kind of whether we would put a condition in there that that analysis be done.
Yeah, that was what I was trying to.
Wouldn't the planning board require that?
Yeah, that's just what I was kind of mulling over too, Chip. I I mean, my personal view, I understand what Kelly's saying. My personal view is that I think they've presented enough for us to can, to determine that the distance to the stream is not gonna be a potential environmental issue because of the improvements that will be made, but you know, the location and scope and size of those specific improvements would be a planning board issue.
I'd like to mention someplace, but I don't know if it's in this section, that um, we um, congratulate uh neighbors getting together with uh uh, trying to make uh, make the environment, improve the environment. And uh, I think that's to be uh, I, let's hope this is a model that we can see in the future with uh, with more applicants.
Yep, I agree. All right. So then we'll add our two conditions, which is that the variance is granted specific to the most recent plan submitted to the Z B A and any change in the plan shall. Which is that the variance is granted specific to the most recent plan submitted to the ZBA and any change in the plan shall invalidate the variance. And the variance is conditioned on building permits being issued within one year of the date the variance is granted. Failure to obtain building permits within one year shall invalidate the variance. And then if Chris, um, well, we need to call the vote for the second one. I'm getting ahead of myself. Go ahead.
The applicant is requesting a nineteen point two foot setback from a water course when a hundred foot is the minimum. Shall the applicant be granted an eighty point eight foot area variance for setback from water cars? Bob?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Chip?
Yes.
Terrence?
Yes. So in terms of our decision, Chris, we can use the exact language from the decision that we just made for the property to the north. There will be one exception in there. I referenced the, the property to the south and now that reference needs to be. Changed to say the property to the north where that occurs. All right. Well, that is the end of our deliberations. We'll now move into board business. I don't know, Chris, if you have a sense for what we'll have next month. We're, we're going to have the three continuations already. And then if you have a sense for what other new applications there might be?
Honestly, not too many as far as variances right at the moment.
Okay. Um, and it looks like there's no current referrals from the ordinance committee. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. In terms of ordinance committee, Bob. And I'm going to kind of step aside here for a minute as a member of the board and just as a resident. But there will be a referral that will be made by the town board to you guys about, um, zoning issues in the SCR one. Um, I'd love to just chat with you directly as a resident, as a member of that ordinance committee, if you have time.
Sure. You name it.
All right. I'll shoot you an email. We can separate the time. Minutes from last month, they would have any changes, revisions they, they need to make? No? All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I moved, I moved.
Okay. I think there was a second from Dave. Yep, okay.
Bob and I seconded it.
Yep.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Um, is there anything else that a member of the board would like to discuss before we move to adjourn? No? Okay. Well, it is seven fifty-three and we'll adjourn till next month on motion. I'll motion any second?
Second.
I'll second.
Favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.